Call the February 25th meeting of Dublin City Council back to order and I will ask Kathy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We will start off with our special presentation of the Ohio State University Airport Master Plan. Donna Goss, are you going to be teeing this up for us?
Yep. Good evening, members of council. Please join me in welcoming Dr. John Horak, the Neil Armstrong Chair in Aerospace Policy at Ohio State University. Dr. Horak holds a joint appointment between the Department of Mechanical and Aerospace Engineering and the College of Engineering and the John Glenn College of Public Affairs. In addition to his faculty appointment in the College of Engineering, Dr. Horak also serves as the Senior Associate Dean for the college. He's here tonight to provide an update on recent activities at the Ohio State University Airport at Don Scott Field.
Dr. Horak, welcome.
Thank you very much, Ms. Goss, for the introduction. Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Grumes, members of the council and city management, thank you. I will be brief, but I want to introduce myself because I'm fairly new to the position of Associate Dean, Senior Associate Dean of Engineering, so now you have a face to match a name. I go by John, and you should feel free at any time you have questions about the Ohio State University Airport, our aviation and aerospace education campus, please let me know. We are very excited about the work that goes on there in education and in research and in experiential learning for a wide range of students, not just those who are in aviation and aerospace, but across almost the entire breadth of what we do at the Ohio State University. It's truly a unique asset, supports over 800 jobs, as well as about $150 million worth of aggregate economic benefit to the surrounding communities, of which Dublin is one. As you know, we are investing in our aviation and aerospace activities across the board so that we can address certain challenges that the United States faces, for example, pilot shortage, which we expect to see. You can always see challenges in the aviation industry. For example, Southwest Airlines most recently had to ground a significant part of their fleet due to maintenance, repair, and overhaul. This is a significant and important part of what we do. Of course, there's a strong environmental component to being able to sustain our activities in aviation, and so we're proud to do that. You may have noticed, most recently, we were very fortunate to receive a $10 million gift from the Austin E. Knowlton Foundation, which allowed us to develop a brand-new terminal there. Many, for example, of the golfers who will come for the memorial tournament will actually use that facility to enter and exit the Columbus region as they play here in Dublin. It is a world-class teaching and private aviation facility that integrates the opportunity for student pilots and others learning about aviation to interact directly with professionals who fly airplanes. The Aviation Research Center that is also located on Case Road will perform about $5.5 million worth of research expenditures this year into research that includes how to make airplanes more quiet, how to lower the noise from engines, how do we develop all-electric airplanes, probably not for a Dallas-to-Sidney route, but perhaps for many of the commuter and private airplanes that we fly. It's not uncommon for us to go buy a Honda Prius or Toyota Prius or electric car. You know, you have to be careful when you step off the curb because you don't always hear that they're there. We hope in the future that airplanes can be made that way as well, along with lots of other activities, including how turbine blades, how can we extend their lifetime in an airplane engine, how do we know before they fail that we can do maintenance. So, a large amount of research and activities that are going on. I want to invite you and all the members, citizens of the city of Dublin and stakeholders to two things. One is that on the 12th of March, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Ohio State University Airport, we will be holding a public meeting at which we will discuss some of the plans for the future growth and investment that we are making in the aviation and aerospace education campus, as well as Don Scott Field. That'll be an opportunity for the public to come and have comment, an opportunity to share their thoughts, their ideas, their inputs. And, you know, there's a great place. You can park your children upstairs to watch the airplanes. There's always free popcorn in the fixed base operator office, so it's also a kid-friendly, very child-friendly environment as well. And then also, in partnership with COSI, the very first week in May, you may be aware that COSI is having a very extensive science festival that will last from about Wednesday through Saturday. And on Thursday, May the 2nd, we will be participating with COSI in another open-house activity, sort of a very STEM-oriented educational activity for K-90. Of course, if you're 92 and can make it out there, we'll welcome you as well. And so, those are two opportunities that we have for the public to come and engage. And it is always open. We have a very, like I said, a very nice place where you can bring your children, watch airplanes, learn about airplanes, and learn about the vibrant history of Don Scott Field. So, thank you again for the opportunity to share just a few words with you. I hope that the most important feature of my comments has been their brevity, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Horak, for coming in. A $10 million gift, that's a nice thing to get.
Yes, sir. That was, we are very blessed with not only the Knowlton Foundation, but also other organizations such as NetJets. NetJets, through their relationship with the Ohio State University, has arranged to provide seven brand-new training aircraft. These are brand-new Cessna 172 aircraft. They retail for about $300,000 apiece, and this allows us to train our men and women who are learning to fly in absolute state-of-the-art equipment with the most up-to-date avionics, the most up-to-date systems and features that they need to fly safely and fly productively. So, we're very fortunate to have many, many stakeholders.
It's such a fantastic resource, and it's right here in our backyard, and you wouldn't even really notice that it was there. So, March the 12th is your open house?
Yes, sir.
And then May the 2nd is the, I know that our Emerald Campus is one of the stops on that STEM tour.
That's correct.
So, really cool things that are going on. I was thinking you were going to invite me out to fly a plane.
That could be arranged, sir.
Okay.
You probably have to clear that with whatever insurance activities you have affiliated with the city of Dublin, but we would love to have any of you out for a tour. You're always welcome. We could schedule that for the entire council and leadership, or on an individual basis, happy to do that.
And the evolution over the years must be just amazing, the technology and...
Yeah. When you think of the fact that in 1942, '43, it was set up to train pilots to fly for World War II. It's named after Don Scott, who was a scholar, athlete, and on the football program at Ohio State, killed in action. And now, it's a place where we're interacting with automated vehicles, drones, and, you know, learning how to fly those safely, and how do they interface with the national aerospace system, and then, of course, serving as an anchor of the transportation corridor along Route 33 between the Transportation Research Center and the Don Scott Field, which puts Dublin right at an anchor point on the future of how we're going to navigate, send people and packages and other things through the air and on the ground.
Unbelievable. And, John?
Do you still have your restaurant, and is it still open to the public?
Yes, sir. If I may be permitted, it is called The Barnstormer.
Barnstormer.
It is open for breakfast quite early and open for a late lunch. You will not find dinner there, but I can recommend the breakfast highly and also the cheeseburger and fries. It's a very, very great place to go, another place that's very family-friendly, and the walls are completely adorned with all of the history of Ohio aviation, including what's on the back of our quarter. And if people wonder why is aviation important to Ohio, if you only put important things on your money.
There you go.
On the back of our money, we have the Wright Brothers flyer and a Milwaukee astronaut.
Any other comments from council? Thanks, Doc. Oh, go ahead.
Just one. It's fascinating, you said that the airport is involved in the 33 corridor, the autonomous flight. I hadn't heard that, and we're very active with the 33 corridor when it comes to automobile travel, and I was wondering if there might be an opportunity that you could come and speak to the 33 corridor about air travel on the autonomous route.
Right. So, we've entered into a cog in Dublin, and this was a while back, actually, into agreement with Ohio Department of Transportation as a testing corridor for drone technology. So, that's just starting to, no pun intended, take off, but it's starting to, just starting to happen.
There are two examples, Ms. Fox, that I can cite. I'm not deeply familiar with them, but I am aware of them. One is, you can imagine pre-positioning drones along that corridor so that when there's a traffic accident, EMS responders already know something about what they're about to drive up upon, whether that, you know, is the lane blocked, or is the car in the ditch? Is it upside down? Is it on fire? Some of these things don't always come through the 911 emergency call, but you may be able to deploy a remotely operated vehicle with a camera, and then those folks are more prepared to respond when they're there.
That's great.
We're also having some conversations with Drive Ohio and Fly Ohio about the opioid epidemic, and this is a question that we hope to falsify the hypothesis, if I can say that. Many people seem to be reluctant to call 911 when there is an opioid emergency, but you might punch a button on your phone, and that might be able to, for example, deploy a remote vehicle that can drop Narcan or some other substance that will help, obviously, Narcan, as I go into the details, helps you breathe again. But if you can get there two minutes, four minutes, five minutes faster than EMS, perhaps that's a way we can make a small but meaningful impact in the horrible crisis that we're seeing.
That's fascinating.
We would test that, not necessarily deploy, but that would be a proving ground where we could say, yeah, you know, we tried it, it didn't work.
That's fascinating, because I think so many people don't really understand how some of this autonomous new technology can be helpful to community instead of simply being just something that gives you data, it actually can save lives, right?
And that second project that I mentioned is, at the moment, entirely student-driven, and they have a great name for it. It's called Air St. Bernard. So, as the dog comes to help you stranded in the snowstorm, this would be sort of the rescue vehicle that would come help you in a much more serious situation.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, thanks a lot for coming in, Doc.
Thank you all very much.
Doors are always open.
I will leave my card here with Ann, and any of you can reach out at your convenience.
It's great. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time. Bob? We are going to have a presentation on the Bridge Park Multi-Use Sports Facility from Bob Hoing, Principal Crawford Hoing.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. We're excited to be here today to review the Bridge Park Fieldhouse. It's a project we've been working on as a potential future phase to Bridge Park, and excited to walk you through the project tonight. This is what we want to cover, what it is, why build it, and who it's for. Matt will come up and hit on operations and a little bit of financial background about the project, where we're at today, and then we'll hit on impact, return on investment, and talk about potential next steps. We do have a video that we'll show here. It's a three-minute short video about the project, but I want to just get you oriented to the site. We were able to submit to the state of Ohio about a year ago, I guess, a little bit longer, for a $1 million grant, which we were awarded for the project. Originally, it was on F Block of Bridge Park, which you can see. After working on the project, we found that F Block was a little bit too tight. We decided, for various reasons, to move it up the hill further to the east to J Block. During that time, we've been working closely with Wendy's International and have executed a long-term parking agreement where we'll share their surface parking spaces. It's around 800 spaces that go really unused at night and on the weekends, so we're really excited about that location. It just gave ourselves a little bit more room to work on the project. Just real quick update on Bridge Park. We are 100% leased on our office space. We've just started D Block to the north. That'll deliver most of those spaces in the next year. That's where the north market, public market, is located. In F Block, we'll start our next hotel, Spring Hill Suites. It's 145 key hotel that will be located in F Block. And in H Block, we've sold 14 out of the 22 townhomes today, and we'll start actually closing on those here shortly. So, here's a video. We'll let it play and get on with the presentation.
The main reasons that this is important for Dublin City Schools would be twofold. One, so that our younger students who are in the DYA programs can have more access to venues here in Dublin. Right now, we're really overcrowded, and oftentimes, student participation is limited because of that. We're also excited about the potential for our graduation ceremonies to relocate here. Currently, that's at OSU, and having that back in Dublin just brings us so many benefits.
You know, it's an example of some of the events that might come to this kind of facility is a basketball tournament, for example. A tournament over the weekend might draw 100-plus teams, 2,000 or so visitors, and, you know, those visitors are looking to go to restaurants, are looking to shop, they're looking to spend money here in the city of Dublin.
Well, the Ohio Basketball Hall of Fame originally thought they were going to build a museum to house the Hall of Fame inductees, and that portion of it never really became reality. And I think this building is centrally located in the state of Ohio, and being new, I can't imagine a better place to call home than a place where they actually play basketball. The Ohio Basketball Hall of Fame would love to call it their home.
Dublin Field House is going to be a great addition to Dublin and Bridge Park. You know, I think about the venues that I see around the country when we're putting on events, not just for golf, but in general, and the addition of a venue like the Field
I think the video does a great job of kind of showing everybody what it can be.
House will bring so many different options to the city, for kids' use sports coming
Obviously, we've gotten to a point with our architects and other consultants to this
through, concerts, congregations of whatever size and meaning.
point. What is it? It's 150,000-square-foot multipurpose athletic and events center.
I think it'd be a great addition for the economic impact of the city, the viability
Approximately 110,000 square feet is on the ground floor with some mezzanine and some support space, up to eight basketball courts, potentially 10 basketball courts, and converts
of the city. It'll be unique and different, something that we don't necessarily see across Columbus
to 16 volleyball courts with the flexibility of hosting all kinds of sporting events and
specifically, but you don't see it in such a great concentrated area where you have
other types of trade shows.
all these other amenities around it, and I think it'd be a great addition to Dublin.
We also have the ability in the main part of the gym to host events up to 5,000 people. So, that's something that you don't see in our marketplace. Weekdays, it's really here to serve the local residents with youth and adult athletic league programming, other recreation league programming, and trade shows. On the weekends, it's really designed to host regional and national athletic tournaments and also trade shows. We already or will have close to 3,000 structured parking spaces already built and then around Bridge Park, and that doesn't include the 800 or so spaces that we have available at Wendy's. This is how J Block lays out. So, one thing we kind of lucked into a little bit by moving it up further to the east is it's created this extra space for additional office that we didn't have before. So, we conceivably could get up to 300,000 extra square feet of office as part of F, G, and J Block, which we didn't have before. You can see how the main part of the Field House lays out. It shares a parking garage with either a residential liner, or that could be a resident, or an office liner as well. And then you can see off to the east is Wendy's International and the parking field that's available to us as well. Here's some renderings of the exterior. We're looking to the northeast here, and you can see the office building, residential liner, and parking garage and Field House there. The front part of the Field House is the main part of the gym and the auxiliary to the rear. It's about 32 feet clear height in both parts of the facility. Here's some other renderings. Here's how the facility lays out, the concept plan for it. So, really, yellow, you have office space for any of the management onsite. Also, we have designed up to four locker rooms, so you can host multiple events throughout the day, double or triple headers throughout the day. You have, red is programmed for Hall of Fame space. We presented this to the Ohio Basketball Hall of Fame about a year ago. They're very interested in locating their statewide museum into the entrances at both ends, the east and the west. And so, if you think about, like, St. John's Arena, going in and seeing all the old photos, we're really excited about that. We think it gives this property a sense of place when you come in, whether you're playing basketball, or volleyball, or whatever it might be. I should point out the loading docks to the south. So, those are designed for tractor-trailers, and you'll see later slide where we can host small concerts, graduations, and other types of shows for easy deliveries. The gray is support space and some storage as well to the north. This is the upper-level plan, the mezzanine and concourse, just kind of shows the upper level and how that lays out. And I'll fly through a couple of these slides, just kind of shows the flexibility of how this facility would be laid out. This shows a convention center, or a convention for 160 conferences. Obviously, this thing could double if we wanted to, but also, the auxiliary gym could be used to service a main conference that's happening in the main part of the gym. This is set up for a show, a concert, graduations could happen here. We have about 1,200 seats on the floor, on the court, and so, and host up to 5,000 people. There is the ability to have multiple events happening at the same time, and you can see how this thing could be, still be set up for something else happening in the auxiliary gym. This is set up for a main event and also basketball. I do want to point out, you know, Dan Haynes is our architect on this project. He's designed multiple projects like this across the country, and so, he's really done a great job of laying out the appropriate number of bathrooms, point-of-sale for concessions, that sort of thing for us. Why build it? Local residents and the need for additional recreation space and more athletic programming. I think a lot of us that have had children that have come through Dublin here recently in the last 10 years, for sure, have seen a real lack of space, and that's happened for a lot of reasons. Number one, we've had a lot of population growth, a lot of new people into Dublin, but also, some of the changes that OHSAA has made with what they allow high school coaches to do with their student athletes. So, if you're playing football in the offseason, for instance, you can get in the gym and you can work out with your coaches, and that's really pushed a lot of the DYA in Dublin rec out of the gyms, out of the middle schools, and really have not a great, a lot of great options out there. So, that's happened, and, you know, this could alleviate some of those issues. It's also to drive regional and national tourism to the city of Dublin. That's certainly going to happen on weekends when we host these regional and national tournaments. No other venue like this in the marketplace that can host 5,000-person events. I know, working with the folks downtown, they turn away a lot of events that just aren't profitable downtown because the convention center is so big, and so, we feel like there's a lot that can happen here in Dublin. It's also to leverage Dublin assets and attract larger events and tournaments. Think about our three really nice high schools that have really nice high school gyms. We can augment what's happening here and have larger basketball, volleyball tournaments, that sort of thing. Also, as we discussed before, we're in close proximity to over 3,000 parking spaces that are within walking distance to this facility. And then, continued population growth to not only Dublin, but the region, you know, 1 million people by 2050 is what we're seeing, or reading about. So, that's not going to change. Here are the potential users, and I won't go through every one. We've worked tirelessly in a lot of meetings with all of these folks about potentially using the facility. The Cleveland Cavaliers have interest in their academies, June, July, to come down and have multiple events that Central Ohio is their second-largest market, and so, it makes a lot of sense for them. OHSAA, we've been talking to them about various competitions that can happen at the Field House as well, so I won't go through the whole list there. I'll bring Matt up to hit on some of the operation and financial part.
We've been working pretty closely with Ohio State University. We talked to SMG as well. They operate the convention center, and there's another group we met with out of New York. So, we tried to get a lot of different perspectives on how to operate facilities like this, and we've probably been spending the most time with Ohio State University, mainly because they're building a very similar facility. Been down the campus lately, just north of the track, they're building the Cavelli Center. Cavelli Center is being built for volleyball, wrestling. I don't think there's any other sports in there. So, very similar size, very similar seating capacity, a lot of similarities between that facility and what we've envisioned here. So, it's really helped inform the budgets. It's helped inform the operational pro forma. So, we've been working closely with them. We've been developing, really, a daily calendar, which you have to do to develop this operating budget. A lot of work left to do there at this point. Working with them on maintenance and staffing plans, what do we need to operate this facility? The development budget on this is a little over $35 million. We've been working with Garmin Miller, who's a contractor, who's done a lot of these type of facilities. They actually have an office here in Dublin. They're based out near Dayton. We've also worked with, well, I should say, we've talked to various people that want to put their name associated with this facility, whether it's on the building, sponsorship in some way. I'll show you that on the next slide here. We also, as Bob mentioned before, we got a million-dollar grant from the State of Ohio Capital Fund last year. This is really how the budget lays out, about $36 million. So, when you net the land out of that, it's about 32. Just for comparison's sake, Cavelli is being built for $40 million today. That facility is being built very sports-specific. There's a lot of video capabilities in it. There's a lot of sports locker rooms for those particular programs that house there. So, there's a little, quite a bit additional cost being built into that facility. So, it gave us some comfort in just developing this budget for this facility. You see, from that, we sort of deduct what we think is going to be available from other sources, sponsorship dollars. Based on the conversations we had, we think we can generate up to $4 million in sponsorship dollars. We would contribute $2 million as the developer, and then the aforementioned million-dollar grant from the state of Ohio. That nets about $29.6 that has to be funded. Your bond amount's going to be a little bigger than that just due to reserves and things of that sort. Your annual debt service here, about $2.4, that's based on a 6% interest rate. This is how the profit and loss statement looks. There's a lot of work we have to do left on this. I think overall, working with Ohio State on it, they feel good about the numbers, the gross numbers, the revenues, the operating expense piece. You know, there's different buckets that there's revenues in, but they feel pretty good about that. So, that gets us to a net operating income of $1.5 million. Included in the operating expenses, we assume that we would make a minimum service payment on this facility of $500,000 that would be redirected back towards the bonds. That's why I add it back. And then, we plan on utilizing the new community authority hotel charge on the new hotel. That would be a tool available to us. And then, you see what I have here, which is the gap we really need to fund. This is a number that was solved to get to a 120 debt service coverage on the bond, debt service payment, which we're required to do under the development agreement. So, that was the plug figure in this model. And I guess I would say, there's a lot of levers that can be pulled on here, whether it's on the capital budget, it's on the operational budget, probably more on the capital budget with design-related issues. I feel like the revenue and operating expense piece is probably a little more solid, and there's just not as many dollars in that bucket to maneuver. The way I laid this out, too, is that any of the access goes to reserves. We could approach this differently, where we would fund a reserve through the bond issuance, which is done in many cases with the parking garages today. So, I'm going to turn it back to Bob here for this part. Thank you.
So, impacts, we reached out to the University of Cincinnati for an original market impact study, economic impact study. We have getting that updated, and we'll make that available to council and staff. But some of the numbers that came back, the direct fiscal impacts, you can see income tax, lodging tax, property tax, and a total tax revenue of $271,000 on an annual basis. And we looked at it, what kind of impact...
Included in the operating expenses, we assume that we would make a minimum service payment on this facility of $500,000 that would be redirected back towards the bonds. That's why I add it back. And then we plan on utilizing the new community authority hotel charge on the new hotel. That would be a tool available to us. And then you see what I have here, which is the gap we really need to fund. This is a number that was solved to get to a 120 debt service coverage on the bond, debt service payment, which we're required to do under the development agreement. So that was the plug figure in this model. And I guess I would say, there's a lot of levers that can be pulled on here, whether it's on the capital budget, it's on the operational budget, probably more on the capital budget with design-related issues. I feel like the revenue and operating expense piece is probably a little more solid, and there's just not as many dollars in that bucket to maneuver. The way I laid this out too is that any of the access goes to reserves. We could approach this differently, where we would fund a reserve through the bond issuance, which is done in many cases with the parking garages today. So let's turn it back to Bob here for this part. Thank you.
So impacts, we reached out to the University of Cincinnati for an original market impact study, economic impact study. We have getting that updated, and we'll make that available to council and staff. But some of the numbers that came back, the direct fiscal impacts, you can see income tax, lodging tax, property tax, and a total tax revenue of $271,000 on an annual basis. And we looked at it, what kind of impact it would be over 20 years. Hotel room nights annually is $23,870. And as I think Scott Dring has mentioned, really, these room nights can come at the time where a lot of our hotels need them, and that's it, you know, on Friday, Saturday, Sunday nights, on the weekends. We have really good occupancies typically during the week. And then sports, tourism, economic impacts, really that's spending of $9.5 million, and they have multipliers that they plug into their formulas. So again, there's a lot more to this study that we'll make available. It's very similar to the study I think you all received before. It's got a lot of great information. We actually had them do case studies on four or five other similar types of properties with information, so you'll see that as well. So again, I think it's for us, return on investment impacts is we expand the offerings for the local residents during the week, and we really drive local spending and tourism on the weekends. Key questions and next steps. Really, we've been working on this a long time. We just want to, we wanted to get in front of you, we're excited to be here finally, and just ask, is this a generally supportive idea from council? I think number two, we want to see how, as a group, we can make this project better for the community and get impact or input from everyone. And then it's attacking that gap that Matt pointed out before, and I think for us, we feel like if council staff are ready to engage, we would start working on financial models that we think are viable. And at some point, we bring those forward for review and continue to work diligently with our consultants on this project. So we're really excited about it. You know, we feel like it can be a game changer for Dublin and for Central Ohio because we don't have this here right now. So I guess with that, we'll just open it up to questions and get any feedback that council has.
Thanks, Bob. Comments or questions from council? John?
Now, you said 160 booths. Are you measuring 10-foot booths? I was just trying to get the scale right. Is those 10-footers, 8-footers?
Yes. Yeah, Josh is not in yet. Yep.
Okay. I was just curious about that. And then, and where is the Ohio Hall of Fame located now? Does it have a home?
It does not have a home. They've been looking for a home for, you know, a number of years, and I have interacted with Bill Hoskett, who is there, is on their board. And so we had presented this project to them about a year ago, and, you know, it can make a lot of sense for them to be able to occupy some part of the facility.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Very interesting concept. Certainly, one of the questions that I'm sure you've heard, we'll all hear, traffic. So thoughts on that, studies you've done?
Yeah, we've not done any studies other than conversations that we've had. And I think for us, we wanted to get feedback. I think for any major event, we would have a comprehensive traffic plan done by engineers and presented, vetted to everyone to make sure we feel comfortable with that. We certainly don't want traffic to be bogged down in and around Bridge Park. So that's something that we would intend to bring forward as part of some continued due diligence. I think for us, looking at most events that happen are going to be periodic throughout a weekend, so you'll have people coming and going. You will have a handful, you could have a handful in a month that are graduation parties or graduation events, where you have, you know, 3,000 or 4,000 people coming in and out of an event. I know for us, we have, I think ForFest was pretty successful last year as far as getting people in and out of Bridge Park, and it's something we'll continue to work on as it relates to traffic.
Anybody else? Chris?
I think you've done an excellent job of identifying users. I mean, to have a list of 12 really speaks to the nature of the flexibility of the space, and I think the design and the flexibility is going to be paramount to the success. I too think there are many uses for this in our region that go untapped because we don't have a home for them. And I'm looking forward to hearing the future things that you have to say. I think, I think as a community, you know, we need to help identify sources to fill your funding gap. I don't know that we have particular interest in being that filler of the funding gap, but helping to identify what those could be from in and around the community. But I think this is going to be a critical point for the success of the development of Bridge Park and getting people down there, you know, lunchtime, dinnertime, all of the, particularly midweek, and so on and so forth. So I really like the concept, and you certainly have put a lot of work into it. So I, you know, I know that we would like to see you succeed in that space.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, answering the first target there, are we generally, I'm generally supportive of it as well. I think you hit a need in our community for athletic resources and space without question. You support a lot of the needs of the school. I can't imagine a better venue to have all three of our graduations right here in our community. Then you talk about the return on investment in Bridge Street specifically and Dublin generally, the ROI is off the charts. And I think that there are plenty of citizens in this community that would see that and say, I really look forward to going down there for a number of different things that it'll provide us that we don't have now. So I agree with Chris. I think you've done a fantastic job of sort of capturing all of those things and presenting them in a very effective way. I am supportive, and I also agree that I think between creative minds, we can come up with solutions that we could at least suggest some ways to cover that funding gap. And I think we just need to work together. It seems like a giant resource for the community between the bridge and the Bridge Park and then everything else that's been coming up around this community for the last three decades. This is just another thing that'll make it a really special community. Christina?
Thank you. I would echo the same things that my colleagues have said. I appreciate where you moved the building. I think it's a better location. I think there are some opportunities to figure out how you direct traffic so that it's not all dumping out on the roundabout, which gets enough traffic as it is, as you well know. So I think that'll be a really critical piece, and I think that's the piece that would really make it a better project for the community. I'm really impressed with the thoughtfulness that you've put into this and how many different uses you've identified, and have already procured a million-dollar grant for it before even, you know, bringing this forward. So I really appreciate that. I think that we would be supportive in working with our staff to help try to find some of that funding. I think I'm of the same mind as Chris here, that I don't think we want to be that funding gap filler, but that we would be happy to work together because I think this could be a really key component to help that, to really pull that whole area together and bring it to its just fullest potential. So thanks for bringing it forward.
Anybody else? Jane?
You know, I'm supportive of it too, Bob. I think, I think what's really going to be special for you is once the community sees something like this, and I agree, I think the city can help you find ways to meet that funding gap. I think you're going to find that, you'll find great support from the community, and you might find ways that that gap closes up just because of the excitement in it. I love the fact that the Convention of Visser's Bureau has been asking for a site this size to bring in the kinds of things you're looking at. But most importantly, for me, I like the fact that it almost becomes this community entertainment and the things that we are so strong at, whether it's education and the graduation things, the concerts, the music, the arts, that we know that there's a gap in, that we could bring in some pretty special events that way. And then obviously, the sports, we're so big here. So I'm supportive of it. I think I would have no problem with our staff helping find ways that we can help you bring this to reality. But I think the exciting thing will be what the community says when they get an idea of what you're planning in.
Thanks.
Okay. You got what you need?
Thanks.
Thanks for coming in, Bob. Appreciate it very much. Citizen comments. Cornell Robertson, I didn't, where is he? Cornell, where are you? There you are. Come on up. This is Cornell Robertson. He is our Franklin County engineer. You got, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members and staff. As I settle into my new role, I'm trying to get around to different communities, different municipalities, and attend city council meetings just to learn more about what's going on in Franklin County. So I appreciate the opportunity to come by sort of unannounced and just talk to you briefly.
Sure. Welcome.
I feel like we have a very strong coordinated effort with Dublin for many years now, and so I want to reaffirm that, and if we can, strengthen it even more. You have an excellent engineering staff, Megan O'Callahan, Paul Hammer Smith, Jeanne O'Willis, Ken Richardson, Todd Garwick. They're all great folks, and I've known them for a very long time, and I look forward to continuing to work with them. As I get out in the community, I realize that many folks don't know much about the engineer's office. I like to say that we're similar to ODOT, but on a much smaller scale, the local government level. We do road projects, bridge projects, drainage projects, even snow and ice removal. But again, on the much smaller local government level. Here recently, we've completed the Dari Fields Drainage Improvement, working with Dublin. We have a little bit of punchless work to do, but we'll get that completed early in the spring. We also have some resurfacing projects scheduled in your neighborhood. We're going to resurface and repave Hootchert Road south of 161, Rings Road west of Hootchert, and then Hayden Run Road west of Cosgrave. So with that, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. But again, I really do appreciate the opportunity to come and speak very briefly.
Thanks, Cornell. Any questions from council? Well, we really appreciate your service. I know you've been working very, very hard. You've had big shoes to fill over the years, and you've done a fantastic job. So we look forward to working with you in the future, and thanks for coming in, Cornell.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. Under the consent agenda, does any member of council wish to remove those two items, the approval of the minutes from February 11th, or the notice of legislative authority regarding the liquor permit deal? Does anybody want to remove either of those items? Then I would make a motion that we approve those two items. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And now I am going to exercise the authority and ability I have to call an audible, and I'm going to move Resolution 14-19 up to the first legislative item that we're going to address. It is the shared use path along Concord Road between D-Side Drive and the existing path north of Palmer Court. Megan, did I tell you I was going to do that? I just did. I just told you that I'm going to...
Consider yourself duly warned.
You have been warned, and I'll just now babble for a minute while you work your way up there.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperative agreement with Concord Township with the construction of a shared use path along Concord Road between D-Side Drive and the existing path north of Palmer Court. Your introduction.
Christina, you want to introduce?
I will introduce this really gladly, happily, with a lot of fervor. That's the best introduction you'll ever get.
That's the best introduction we've ever had. Megan, tell us about how we crack this nut.
Good evening, members of council. Staff has been working with Concord Township and Delaware County Engineer's Office to provide a safe shared use path connection along Concord Road from D-Side Drive in the city of Dublin.
Is your microphone on, Megan?
Usually it's. Do I need to lean forward?
There you go. Now we can...
I usually don't have to do that. Is that what the problem is? Okay. Would you like for me to start over? No, go ahead. You got it? You got it a little bit? Okay. Sorry. Council may recall that in 2017, Dublin constructed the first phase of the path from the tunnel at Glick Road north to St. Boswell Court. Township was awarded $100,000 state grant for this project last year, which the township will be using to fund the portion of the project that lies within the township. Pursuant to the agreement that is presented to you this evening, city of Dublin would agree to pay the cost of constructing the portion of the project that is within the city of Dublin corporation limits, and that's currently estimated to cost approximately $57,000. Township would also be responsible for competitively bidding the construction project as well as administering the project. Township anticipates opening bids in mid-March, and pursuant to the agreement, they would use their best efforts to complete the path and have it operational by the end of July this year. Staff recommends council approval of Resolution 14-19 authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Concord Township for the construction of the shared use path along Concord Road.
Thank you, Megan. Any comment, Christina?
So I believe Concord Township already passed this on their end, is that right?
Yes, they did.
They did. So a big thank you to BART and the township. An even bigger thank you to the residents, some of whom are sitting in the gallery tonight. This would not have happened without you guys pursuing this, talking to council member after council member, township trustee after township trustee, and working with our staff. And of course, a big thank you to you, Megan, for helping to shepherd this along and offering assistance to the township. It's a really good partnership. This is a really great example of how local activism can make a difference in some small ways, but it feels really big ways. So just kudos to everybody. I'm very excited that this is going to get done. So just thanks to everybody for all their hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Any other comment from council?
I don't know if anybody in the audience would like to step forward and make a comment on this because one of you's children was in elementary school and now is ready to graduate, and I...
I was afraid you were going to say is now a doctor, and I thought, oh, not that bad.
But it's been amazing, as Christina said, it's been an amazing effort, and Dublin has backed you all the way, and I know you guys battled a whole lengthy fight with the township to try to get their half of it done, and I think that's what we're really applauding, your efforts. But we, city of Dublin, have always backed you in this effort. Would you like to say anything?
You got to come up here.
Come on up and, come on up and give us your names and...
Yes, I am Becca Waklinsky. It was my child who, this kind of started when he was in kindergarten and wanted to take his dad on an adventure to ride his bike to school. And we are a Meerefield resident who attends Eli Penny, and when he would be on the bus, he would see lots of bike paths, but to a six-year-old not realizing they don't all connect. So they'd gone out on their adventure and come back hours later with no safe way to get to school, which is how emails and different things started, this whole process. And he is now a junior in high school.
It's been a while.
It took a little while to tap into the right people, to get things, and yes, thank you so much to Meerefield and Dublin because you've all been very supportive. It really took some Concord Township residents to drive this home, where Michelle Brenner steps in and really worked and finished, along with Laura Sale and some other residents, to light a fire, for lack of a better, to get this little section of bike path completed just for safe passage of all the residents and the kids who actually, you know, are Dublin residents but attend school at Eli Penny outside of...
So I'm Michelle Brenner, Concord Township, Eli Penny parent also.
What's your address, Michelle?
What's that?
Your address.
Oh, 6593 Reiner Court, Dublin. But I was going to say, for me, it was a very good lesson in, like, when you get a little strip of land that is shared by so many people, how really long that can take.
Complicated.
Yeah. To get it all together.
Different HOAs and township, city.
Yes. So we're really happy. I mean, we're really thrilled for their, to, I mean, because it just, it's, I mean, it's really silly that it's just this little strip, but it totally seems to make a lot of sense that there would be a path there for the kids to be able to get from Meerefield up to their school, and from Turtun and Concord Township to get down to their buddies at Meerefield and everybody...
And to tie in just to all the bike paths in Dublin because they are...
Yeah, and it really does sort of highlight how amazing this community is that those bike paths are just sort of expected in all the communities around Dublin, and it is a heavy lift. And when you cross over multiple jurisdictions and you have multiple budgets and all kinds, it gets super complicated. I know it wasn't more than a couple of years ago that we were sort of scratching our heads like, this is not a solvable problem. I don't know why, but it's just not solvable. But lo and behold, now here it is solved. So thank you for all your...
Sorry Laura Sale couldn't be here today. She was the one that made me aware of, through her son Gavin, of that missing tooth. So it's a good day.
Christina has been a huge help.
And I'm excited to say that the completion date for your project is on my birthday, July 31st. So it's been a long time, and I want to thank, I want to thank Meerefield too, Association for supporting this effort.
They have been great, and Bob Batman was wonderful as far as supporting it, and yes, and Walter, they stepped up right away, so sure can ensure that, so that was...
Well, thank you, ladies. It was amazing.
Well, now let's, let's get it. Bill, could you please call the roll?
I'm Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Second reading public hearing ordinances, I make a motion that we waive council rules of order to address ordinances 03-19, 04-19, and 05-19 together. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anne?
I'm Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And these ordinances are 03-19, determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio, in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District. Ordinance 04-19, levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio, in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District. And ordinance 05-19, authorizing and approving an energy project cooperative agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Bridge Park D Block Commercial Investments LLC, and ORIX Public Finance LLC, a special assessment agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the county treasurer of Franklin County, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., Bridge Park D Block Commercial Investments LLC, and ORIX Public Finance LLC, and related agreements, all of which provide for the financing of special energy improvement projects.
Jim, I...
Good evening, mayor, members of council. This is second reading. There were some red lines that were presented from this energy projects cooperative agreement and the special assessment that were highlighted in your packet. Would answer, happy to answer any questions. Really, those were just tightening up some languages, preferred verbs, really, that our attorneys would like, but willing to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions from council?
I was looking at some of the interest rates on the 35th page of the Red Line Edition.
The...
Red Line version of the agreement.
Special Assessment Agreement?
So, it looks like the rates from 19 to 26 are at 6.75, 26 to 29, and they escalate to 8.75. Or is that the, are these the same interest rates we have with all of these PACE models that we do?
They are not.
Some of the other ones I recall seeing were significantly lower.
They were.
Okay. Do you have any explanation for that?
I do not, actually. I do not have an explanation, other than that is what ORIX and Crawford-Hoey have worked out in the terms of their financing about that, actually. Matt's not here anymore, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question.
Sure.
I was curious. I noticed that the Franklin County, the authority, the ESID, they collect a fee for the transfer of the assessment. Does, and then the city then pays the assessment directly to the investor. Is there a, is there a cost to the city or do we share in that fee? The transaction fee is, I guess, what I'm asking about, because it is, it is an extra burden to the, not a burden, but it is an extra step that we take in paying the investor by taking the monies from the Franklin County auditor when they're collecting.
Sure, sure. Fair question.
Just curious.
We've imposed on all of these a $1,000 fee to offset the administrative costs to the city, so that includes, you know, the legal costs of reviewing all of this documents, all of the documents pertaining to this, as well as, as you mentioned, when the county passes us the special assessment and then us passing it on to the trustee.
So, it's a thousand a year, something like that, or just...
It's flat 1,000, just upfront.
Okay. And then one other question I have for you, not really pertinent to this particular thing, but PACE can be used in residential. I'm just kind of curious, if one were to take advantage of PACE funding for a large residential area to help homeowners pay for improvements, and maybe I'm catching you off the fly, you don't have to answer this now, I'm just kind of curious, how has PACE been used for residential uses for, say, you know, renewing whatever you need to do to have better sustainability or better environmental improvements in your home?
So, what I can say is I'm more familiar with the commercial side of the financing. I know it is available for residential. There are some nuances.
I can probably help with that.
Go ahead, Mike.
It's used heavily out in California. It's where the main program started. They're using it a lot for solar. They're also using it for neighborhoods that may have issues with roofs and windows and doors and all the other kind of components in areas where maybe the income isn't as high. And this would allow them to gain the funds to be able to spread it out over a period of time.
Okay. And since I know PACE prefers that projects are over $200,000, is that not the case necessarily? Or do you have to have a little, have to create a neighborhood district that could participate?
I don't know about the district. They're working on it right now. Our people at Air Quality are working with the folk, in fact, we had a presentation from the person from California, and then the Franklin County authorities involved in it as well.
That's something interesting.
It's a really, really nice program and we're trying to push it statewide to be able to help some of those areas that need that kind of, you know, need that kind of assistance. Because you can have a furnace put in, put it on your tax bill and spread it out over a period of time, isn't it?
That's a great idea. Something that, you know, can look at as an incentive for residents.
We'll seek information from Franklin, from the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority on just what can be used for residential and how.
Okay.
So, we'll get that information back to council.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Hearing none. Anne?
I'm Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
And Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Resolution 10-19, yeah?
Adopting the Franklin County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update.
I'll introduce it. Where's our deputy chief? There he is. Deputy Chief Pis.
Good evening, members of council. Resolution 10-19 is a recommendation for city council's adoption of the updated Franklin County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. The plan was updated in 2018. The plan has been approved by the Ohio MA and the Federal Emergency Management Agency and final completion requires adoption by all cities and villages in Franklin County. Just as a reminder, city council's adoption of the plan assures the city's eligibility to receive federal mitigation funds. Is there any questions?
Any questions from council? Kathy?
Thank you. I saw when I read through it that each of the municipalities had a chance to update or add things. Did we make any changes as it relates to the safety of Dublin?
Yes, we did have an opportunity to participate in some work sessions and we did have some updates that were recommended as part of the plan. So, as an overview of those updates, in 2018, for the mitigation efforts that were recommended for the city of Dublin, bury all electrical utility lines and poles, install safe room and wind shelters in public parks, existing buildings, replace wood poles with concrete ones if damaged, and then storm water retention, pond mucking, cleaning, sediment removal were inclusions for the update for the city of Dublin in the plan.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
I'm Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
And Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Resolution 11-19?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Franklin County Public Defender Commission for the Defense of Indigent Defendants.
Jane?
Good evening, council members.
I'll introduce. Go ahead.
The city is required by law to provide access to court-appointed attorneys to indigent defendants. Historically, we've contracted with the Franklin County Public Defender's Office and we're proposing a new contract with them for 2019. The proposed contract provides for a cost per case of $81.90 and $3,600 has been budgeted. In 2018, there were 42 defendants who qualified for this program. We recommend approval of Resolution 11-19 and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Resolution 12-19?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Franklin County General Health District, doing business at Franklin County Public Health, and Clark Environmental Mosquito Management, Inc., for integrated mosquito management services.
Megan?
Good evening.
I'll introduce. Sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening. Dublin, along with many communities in the region, partners with Franklin County Public Health to provide mosquito management services for the area. The most recent contract expired at the end of 2018 and a request for proposals was issued for future integrated mosquito management services. And those services are comprehensive, which are geared primarily toward preventing disease. Two proposals were received and evaluated and the lowest and best proposal was determined to be Clark Environmental Mosquito Management, Inc. The cost of Dublin for these services in 2018 was just over $40,000 and the cost for each of the next three years will be at the same rate and those are budgeted within the amount established for 2019. Staff recommends council approval of Resolution 12-19, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Franklin County Public Health and Clark Environmental Mosquito Management, Inc. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Jane?
I have one. I was interested to see that Clark Mosquito Services uses the Earth Right Program, which utilizes products listed with the Organic Materials Review Institute. You know, so many of our residents worry that when you come through and you spray that they have to go inside for fear they're going to get pesticide sprayed or something. Can you just give me a little idea on the Earth Right Program, whether that includes, like, neighborhood spraying and, and just to give our residents a sense of understanding of what we're spraying out there?
And I did highlight that aspect of the scope of services for that very reason. This is a new addition and played into the selection of this vendor. So, as outlined in the memo, Clark Mosquito Services, they do offer Earth Right Program and that's going to be part of the region's mosquito management effort. This program utilizes products listed with Organic Materials Review Institute, or OMRI. So, what that means is both the larvicide and the adulticide. And the larvicide is the treatment that we use to prevent eggs from becoming adult mosquitoes and then the adulticide is what you might refer to as the spraying or the fogging. So, this material is recognized as being safe to use in and around organic crops and gardens. They're made from naturally derived active ingredients, along with other inert ingredients that are registered by the U.S. EPA. The programs that we've had to date have all been approved by the EPA and used chemicals and materials that were approved by the EPA, but this is one added addition for this year's program, which we believe to be a positive.
Right. I really commend you for thinking about that, because I think all of us want to live a little cleaner, a little more organically, and I think because we are the city that sprays all over that the fact that staff has really looked at this as a way to protect the health and welfare of, is, I think we should point it out, because I think it's important that we've done it and I think that's great. Thank you for doing that.
Megan, I had a question regarding the service request and the do not spray request. Do we carry those over from year to year or will additional requests be made, need to be made for this coming season? We do carry those over, so those are... Sorry, hi. I'm having microphone issues tonight. I inadvertently turned that off. We do carry those over from year to year. Those are part of the Franklin County Public Health's website, so we refer to any location that's been identified as part of... Is there a link to that on our website or we just... Yes, there is. Send them along so they can get directly to that. Yes, there is, yeah. Our communication staff work very closely, hand in hand, with Franklin County Public Health's communication staff. Great, thank you.
Kathy?
Yes, I think, I want to echo Jane's comment and I think sharing that with the public will be wonderful. I saw also in there that they're also new to this program, as I understood it, is that we now have what is considered a nuisance mosquito spraying, so in addition to the general stuff, it sounds like we could request if there's issues around ponds. What will be the process for residents to do that and how will we sequence it and cost related to that? Because I've heard that a fair bit around particularly, of course, storm ponds. So, that's a good addition. Can you share with us?
Yeah, so there was significant discussion about that, because the program is primarily geared towards disease prevention. The working group that was compiled, consisting of representatives from the jurisdiction in the region, there was a lot of discussion around that, primarily because a couple of years ago, we had an abnormally wet season, which prompted a very, very high population of adult mosquitoes in the region and Dublin staff received a lot of requests from Dublin residents. The process in the past has been that Dublin residents, Dublin staff, we report those requests and concerns to Franklin County Public Health staff. So, they field those inquiries, so residents can either call city of Dublin staff and we'll share that information with Franklin County Public Health, or there's also the number that we share with our residents, so they can make a request or report an abnormally high number of mosquito population directly to Franklin County Public Health. I believe the criteria that was established, I'm not sure if I included in my memo, is that a threshold would be determined, I believe it was 50 mosquitoes in a trap would be the threshold for consideration. So, once we hit that threshold and then, you know, staff will determine, you know, engage the interests that we've been hearing from residents and then we'll work with Franklin County Public Health to make the call as to whether we perform one of those.
So, again, maybe as part of that process, we could share that, because that was new, this is added as a new element.
That is a new element, yes.
I think that will also be well received. So, thank you. Thank you for your work on that.
No problem.
Yeah, I think part of that policy came out of our CSAT commission, so there's important work that they were doing.
Yes.
So, thank you to them too. Any other questions from council? Anne?
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Resolution 13-19?
I'll...
Did you not vote?
No, I did.
I'm sorry. Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Dublin City School District, Board of Education, for fleet shared services for compressed natural gas school buses.
I'll introduce it.
Megan?
Good evening, city of Dublin and Dublin City School District, Board of Education. Have an ongoing shared services agreement with regard to the gasoline and diesel fuel service area and providing those fuels. School district recently purchased five compressed natural gas, or CNG, school buses. City and school staff have reviewed operations within our respective organizations and determined fueling and preventive maintenance and repairs for the school district's new CNG school buses would best be provided by the city of Dublin and it would result in improved efficiencies and benefit both organizations. The city's fleet building is equipped with the required ventilation to perform maintenance City of Dublin would invoice the school district monthly. Staff recommends city council approval of resolution 13-19, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Dublin City School District Board of Education, and they approved this agreement at their last board meeting.
Great. Questions from council? Hearing none? Anne?
Vice Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Moving on to the other portion of the agenda, I make a motion to table at the applicant's request. Is there a second? This is the residents of Tyler Heights. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Independence Day, price changes. Allison, are we waiting for you as you make your way? All right.
Good evening, members of council. The memo in your packet outlines the changes we want to make for the 2019 event. The first one is changing the price of the tables, just a $25 increase. The last time we did that was in 2014. As many of you know, we have no problem selling out on the day the tables go on sale. And this is just, you know, we kind of compared it. I actually just looked up the price for the same show in, excuse me, Huber Heights. Two weeks before is $40 a ticket. So we are obviously not really where, you know, anywhere close to what these shows are going for in other locations. The other piece of that is-
When you say $40 a ticket, Allison, you mean per person?
Per person.
Ten people?
Yes, yes. So this would be just $15 a ticket still. So we, you know, obviously are still charging a small amount, even if we make the change for $25. The other change that we are suggesting is charging for wristbands on the day of the event as well. A lot of this is partially because of the confusion that has caused. A lot of residents have said, why are you charging me beforehand and then giving them away for free the day of? And the reason we charge beforehand is because we want to make sure that people just don't come and pick up, because they're allowed to pick up to eight tickets up. So they could come and pick up eight tickets and then just never show up. And we only make the number of wristbands as the fire department says we're allowed to have. So we wanted to ensure that people, if they picked them up beforehand, we're actually going to come back and use them, so that's why we put the $5 value on them. It's still a very low price, but I think it'll, you know, help the confusion a little bit if everybody the day of the event would also pay the $5.
Again, quite a bargain.
Yes.
Any questions from council?
I'd just add that we had talked about this a couple of years ago, three years ago, and we knew it was a work in progress, and that we knew there would be unintended consequences, which we have learned probably over the last two or three timeframes, and this is yet another iteration. So I think we're getting there. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments?
So if the intent of charging was not to raise funds, but to make sure that the residents received, I'm not sure now why we're going to charge for all of it. I mean, I'm not understanding the logic of this.
Well, we still would need to charge for the pre-sales. I mean, that really is our insurance that people will come to the show, because, you know, especially if we have a rainy event, which we've had, we actually have been lucky and not had rain during the event. But we want to make sure that we're filling the stadium, that people who want to get in, but we are sold out of wristbands, can actually get in, you know, because we could get a situation where you have people, 20% of the people who pick up a wristband don't show up, then the stadium's 20% not full. So we'd want to continue the pre-sales that way. The reason we want to add the day of, we had even discussed, you know, do we want to check residency the day of? We have actually gone to doing a drive-through for these wristbands because it is such a, it's kind of a rush that morning to get the wristbands. So we actually have staff that stand out in, you know, that little circle at the high school and literally just hand them out as cars go by. So it's one of those things, we are going to slow ourselves up, obviously, by charging the $5, but then the residents will feel like they're really getting a special deal by being able to get them beforehand. I also think, you know, the numbers, and I know you questioned that, the number that we gave out last year, I think that number will probably increase dramatically because then they know they're going to pay the $5 whether they wait or not. So I think a lot of people will show up, so we'll have a lot more pre-sales.
I think we started some of that because of crowd control. We had a particular concert that was overrun, and we needed to really have a better handle on who was coming, how many, and, I mean, I think we had to actually close the place.
Yeah, during Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, when it was 14, we actually, during the middle of the concert, had to shut it down because we were at capacity. So we instituted this so that we would allow our residents to have first chance.
Yeah, that part I get. I get the pre-sale pot.
It's just unintended.
But now I'm struggling because I think once people realize, well, I don't have to go early to go get it, right? I'm going to pay for it anyway.
Plus, they want to make sure they've got a spot.
They want to make sure they have it. I think it's more catching the back half up with the front half. I mean, it's the front half, the logic of making you pay.
You want to take a chance you can't get in, is the question.
No, I get that, but, I mean, leaving at the same policy, you've done that. I'm just not sure why, if there are some families that want to and couldn't afford to, in the current process, they can come on that day. Now, you know, if there weren't any, then, the numbers you shared, there's about 12,000-
Total, yeah.
Total, and the highest was about 5,000. That was last year, right?
Yeah.
And the others were about 3,000, et cetera. So then you know 3,000 are coming or whatever. I'm just concerned that on the, if the goal is to say, hey, we want pre-sales, keep it, I get that. That makes perfect sense to me. But if the day of, there's a family that can't come, and we're not going to, I mean, it's not going to be a big economic, I'm still struggling with the logic about why we want to do that on the day of. That's the struggle I'm doing. Now, if the goal were, and you were to say the goal were non-residents versus residents, so let's make sure the residents come first, and we would want to charge the non-residents so that I could get that, I'm just struggling with the logic. I get the original logic, I get the pre-sales, that all makes perfect sense to me. I just want to be sure that the families that maybe economically can't come, get to come, and I'm struggling with the same day, so help me here, guys, because I'm not getting it.
Yeah, I'm one, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think if the idea is to try to incent people to purchase the tickets ahead of time, why would we not charge a little less for the pre-sale tickets and then the full $5 or $6 for the day-of tickets, which would lessen the cost for residents, like still keep, like only residents can get tickets ahead of time, lower that cost just a little bit, which is then offset by the cost, the $5 or whatever you would do on the day-of? To me, that makes a little more sense because then you're really encouraging people, and it's a little more affordable if you're a resident and you purchase the tickets ahead of time. That's just a thought.
You know, I was just going to say the same thing. I'm thinking what you really want is pre-sale. You want it guaranteed, and you want to make sure the residents get it. Lots of residents have family that comes in for 4th of July that aren't our residents. If they knew they could get their tickets for $3, and you sold, because, and you sold a lot more because it was cheaper than $5 at the door, you might sell a lot more $3 tickets ahead of time, and you're still going to pick up whatever you missed out on because you're now selling to everybody on the day-of. So my suggestion would be $3 pre-sale, $5 at the gate.
And that way, it's more affordable to the families. Because again, this is our event, this is our day, and I don't want to put a barrier there, and I'm not, that maybe even enhances, so I like that idea.
I like that, as long as, I think Angel made me promise that it was a nice round number. Yeah, so, yeah, with the $5, I think, I like that. We don't want to make a lot of change that day, right? But, yeah, no, I think that kind of makes sense to do.
Well, let's give it a try. How about a motion to that end?
I'll move that they are $3 pre-sale and $5 day-of. We will offer those pre-sale exclusively to residents and $5 day-of to any outstanding wristbands that are left over at that point in time.
And I second that. Motion.
Anne? Anne, leaving the rest of these numbers the same?
Yep, yes.
Okay, Anne?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
I'd just like to say we can tweak this again next year.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you vote, Mike?
No, I didn't.
Say yes.
Yes.
Okay, staff comments. Dana?
Thank you, members of council. Just a few comments, want to lift a couple of things up out of your information packet. First, I want to congratulate our finance director and her team on receiving the Government Finance Officer Association's Award of Excellence for excellence in financial reporting for 2017. This is our 29th year in a row for this award. I'm sure you'll join me in congratulating them on their achievement. It's certainly yeoman's work to try to get that CAFR ready, and it just wears me out to look at how thick that thing is. So I want to thank Jerry. I know spends a lot of time working on that, and we're going to go for 30 years in a row next, so congratulations to that team. Council requesting an update of the mobility study. That is in your packet. I asked staff to place a new update in your packet on events. So speaking of events, you've got an event update, which will give you probably, I don't know, every other month or quarterly, something like that, so you have an idea of the magnitude and types of events and when they're happening in the community. And with that, other than any questions you may have, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dana. Committee reports. P&amp;Z, Jane?
I don't have anything.
Admin, Chris?
Yes, you all received an email from Dana today regarding a workshop on Monday, the 4th. I saw two replies, and I didn't see four. So if everyone could please reply to that.
Actually, we got-
Oh, you've got more.
-replies from everyone. Councilmember Keenan cannot be here, he's out of town, but it appeared as though everyone else could do that.
Wonderful.
Sorry, didn't let you know.
I will amend my comments to say thank you all for responding to that memo. Two of you evidently copied all, and the rest of you just replied. So we will have our workshop on the 4th, and we'll circulate that as a public meeting, and then it will be followed by our, on Monday, the 4th, at 5:00 p.m. Yes, from 5:00 to 6:30, our workshop will be. And then at 6:30, we will have our Community Development Committee for Beautify Your Neighborhood Grants, so on and so forth, for the balance of that evening.
I just want to make sure that we were still doing the-
Yeah, we're going to do that.
Yeah, that, along with the other, okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your participation in our retreat this past week. I particularly was quite pleased with the outcome and am looking forward to hearing back from staff on the implementation strategy for the items that we raised. And we will have our executive session review Wednesday evening, so please come prepared for that. And I think that we likely will have on March the 6th, will be, just in case your schedules aren't full enough, on March the 6th, we will hold our P&amp;Z interview evening. So you should be receiving notification from that in short order. The window closes for applications on February the 28th. And I believe that's all I have.
Thanks, Chris. Community Development, John?
Yeah, we're going to meet on the 4th. That's it.
Finance, Mike?
Nothing right now.
Public Services, Christina?
Nothing right now.
Coda, Kathy?
Yes, thank you. A really wonderful event took place this morning at the intersection of Broad and High downtown, and a portion of High Street, and as a matter of fact, the portion in front of the Coda Building, has been renamed the Rosa Parks Way in recognition of certainly the impact that she made. And, you know, as we've been talking about the importance of mobility, it's just such a wonderful highlight of what one person can do and the impact that it can make. So I think that was a wonderful thing. So next time you're downtown, instead of saying, I'll meet you at Broad and High, say, I'll meet you at Rosa Parks Way. So wonderful, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Dublin Community Foundation, Chris?
Nothing to report at this time.
Dublin Friendship Association, Christine?
Nothing this time.
Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Chris?
I have nothing to report.
Wow. Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kath?
Nothing to report, thank you.
U.S. 33 Innovation Corps, or Kathy, or Jane?
Nothing right now.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
Got a new exhibit coming up on March the 5th through June the 7th, and it's called Opening Doors Calling Central Ohio Home. And it's really new Americans who delve into the concepts of identity through their artwork, so it's pretty interesting. And then, of course, we want to all remember that the Garden Party is on May 3rd, the big fundraiser, and hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Board of Education, Christina?
Nothing this time.
See my friends from Washington Township? Eric, Chief, you guys got anything?
Yes, sir.
Proud and happy? Okay. Dublin Bridges Liaison, Jane?
No, the only thing, I don't know if Allison is still here.
Yep.
Is she still?
Back left.
There she is.
Oh, is she? No, I just wanted to let you know, Dublin Bridges was talking about when the new bridge opens, I'm just throwing this out as an event idea, that if there is a way that we can incorporate some of our nonprofits in ways that we can utilize that opportunity to bring forward some of the good kindness that happens.
You mean, bridge people together?
Yeah, there you go. I will let Greg say that. I don't want to look too corny up here, but that's something that they'd like to discuss with events with you, so I'm just passing that on.
Thank you, Jane. Roundtable, we will stay with you. Jane?
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank Michelle and everybody who worked on the retreat. You did a great job, and Chris, all the work you put into it. I thought it was really productive, really stimulating. The conversation and flow of ideas among these council members and staff was just really fun to do, and also, I think it's, we created good consensus. I hope we gave some good direction. My, and I also, I look forward to some of the strategic themes that we're going to be working on. Something else I wanted to bring up, that I kind of talked a little bit with Claudia today when I was asking her some questions that I needed information on, I would like to suggest the possibility of maybe doing a little post-construction tour of Bridge Park for planning and zoning in particular members, any council members, a little bit like what John had suggested, that when we go around the city, but now that Bridge Park is pretty much built out and we're looking at some new developments, it might be kind of nice to take a ride through, or a walk-through, maybe even better, a walk-through, and just get an idea of where, in our Bridge Street code, we have like gateways planned, open space requirements, terminal vistas, the things that we talk about that create sort of what Bridge Park is supposed to look like. And sometimes, when you're planning it, when it's just a blank ground, you imagine what it's going to look like, but you don't really know. Now it's halfway up, and it might be a good idea, especially for planning and zoning, to get a sense of what it does look like, and how we can look at what we did right and what we can do better, that sort of thing. So I'm asking that maybe, from a staff perspective, we plan something like that. And then the last thing that I would like is that at the retreat, we learned that the Bridge Street corridor, Dana, I'm looking at you, the Bridge Street corridor rezoning that we talked about back in May. I know that it's under, it's under study by planning, but I'm just encouraging us to kind of maybe look at a timeline. I think that residents anticipate that when we said that we were doing some rezoning on the West Bridge Street area and in the Historic District, that we make some progress that they can see. And I only ask that because I think that once we create clarity about the guidelines and the zoning, there'll be a comfort level, and that clarity will assure that we'll maintain and preserve the area. So I'm asking for just sort of an update on a timeline and when that will be completed. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Kathy?
Great, thank you. And I also want to echo thanks to the staff and Chris. I thought we tackled some meaty items, and I'm very excited to see how all those action items are going to get done by all of us, so, as retreats always work out that way, but thank you. Angel, I had a couple of questions, thank you, on the financial update. The general fund balance that's in there at $56.7 million, are we still awaiting bond proceeds? And I'm going to guess that's yes?
No. Oh, we're not? So that balance, did some of that end up in the construction? Well, at the end of the year, recall that we made the purchase of, I believe, two parcels. The property located near Emerald 8, and then also the property for, that will be utilized along Shire Rings, the Young property. So those two purchases in and of themselves were, I can't remember the amounts off the top of my head, but multi-millions of dollars. I can provide that information, but that drew down our fund balance specifically in December. But the bond proceeds were repaid when we got those funds in early December.
Okay, so that, so that fund balance is at about 72%, 75%?
Yes, 76.2% at the end of January, based on our 2019 budgeted expenditures.
All right, so we can certainly talk about some of that when we get into the finance committee, because that's now running at a lower number than we have recently. If, we've been in the 70 and 80 million dollar range, right, the last couple of years, so, okay. The investment summary that was in there as well, could you share a bit about what our return on that, those investment funds are? I know I asked this, and it's not on the report, it might be easier if we can add that in the future, but can you share what our current return is on?
Sure. Can I bring that back?
Sure, sure, sure.
At the next meeting.
So maybe if we could just add that, because all the rest of the details there, it's very nice detail about where it's invested, how much it's invested, and all of that, but what we're earning and how that's trending, I think that would be a good addition.
Certainly.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Had the pleasure of attending the firefighters climb up the Rhodes Tower, where they climb up with all their equipment. And that's to raise money for the Central Ohio, for the Lung Association. And Washington Township, I can't remember Vince's last name.
Vince Davis.
Vince Davis. And he came in second, raising money for, for that group and I was very proud to see our guy there. But there was one fly in the ointment, there's a kid by the name of Richardson from Whitehall who raised more money than we did and he happens to be my nephew. So, next year, let's beat the pants off that kid. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Michael?
You know, I think the new equipment, they're carrying about 75 pounds on the back, full load.
Yeah.
Firefighters, so that's going up, in addition to going up the steps, it's a 75 pounds worth of equipment. So, kudos to them. And I want to thank Chris for the goal-setting. If you haven't done it and managed it, you don't know how hard it is to do. It's a labor of love, so, thank you.
More respect for you every day, Mike.
Christina?
I really don't have anything other than to say thank you, Chris, again, and to staff for the retreat. It was, I thought, really well done. We did tackle a lot of really meaty items and I, I'm looking forward to working on our individual committees on some of the things that we've pushed down to committee as well as the workshops. I feel like we're going to be together every Monday night, every week this year.
Very much. You will. Thanks, Christina. Chris?
I have a couple of things. Thank you for the new report for permitted events and we have Tier 1, 2, and 3 events. If we get to the point, some of these months, particularly like April, May, there are many, many events. I don't know that we've reached capacity yet, but if we feel like we're going to be approaching capacity or maybe exceeding our capacity, I would like to see one additional little column on this and I would like to know, I would like us to start documenting who it's benefiting. Is it a nonprofit? Is it the city? Is it a private enterprise and things of that nature? Because when we move into the space where we have to start making some difficult decisions, I think that's going to be the most valuable piece of information for us to make those decisions on.
Yeah, and one thing that we are internally proposing is that we aren't going to allow any new Tier 3 events between mid-May and mid-August, just knowing that those are pretty much the killer months for, you know, all of staff.
Yeah, we had brought that up at retreat and there's more discussion to occur with council, so we'll, we'll get that proposal to you now that we've-
I'm sure that we track that at present, but I just would like to see it on here-
Sure, we can add that column.
-so that we can, you know, as it, as we, as we minimize and then maybe we come to a point where we say, "Well, we can't do any more Tier 2," and we get a wonderful Tier 2 through the door that is just going to be such a benefit to a specific population, maybe we would look at somebody else who was, you know, using it as a personal fundraiser, you know, a corporate fundraiser, rather, that maybe we could slide some in and slide some out when, as we reach capacity. So, thank you for that. My last comment regarding the information in our packet is relative to the 19 finance report and it was, it was very interesting that our withholding would be down 3.24%, our net profit down 4.12%, but our individuals up 12.37. I think that when, and I get that, you know, January numbers don't always mean everything,